Good evening, gentlemen, welcome. We are going to start off with our opening statement. Each candidate will have 90 seconds as indicated by Angie. And we will start off with Ryan Tassif.
So, oh, thanks everyone for coming out. It is really exciting to see everybody here. Thanks Angie and the chamber and everyone for putting this on. I'm actually up here because my wife put me up here. Several years ago, I was complaining about the government policies and ordinances. And she said, you know, if you're going to complain that much, you better go do something about it. And so, at least for the last three years, I've regularly attended city council meetings, work sessions, talked with city staff. I wanted to be involved so I could learn what the problems were and what the constraints were for solving those problems. I'm not up here to make promises I can't keep, but I am up here to fight for the city to make sure we have positive growth while still maintaining our, our character. My wife and I bought our first home here. We built a business here because of that character. I'm going to fight to preserve our most basic and critical city resources like our roads. As your representative, I'll be able to bring my experience both from the corporate world. At P&amp;G, I'm a project lead and have to deal with big budgets, departments, and overcoming bureaucracy. But we also own our own small business, in which case we have to get through with bailing twine and duct tape to basically make it through the day. I think that as your representative, I'll be able to do a positive thing for the city, and it would be my deepest honor if you saw that too. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Steven Kaiser.
Yes, I'm Steven Kaiser. I grew up here in Lebanon. My parents moved to Clear Creek Township when I was about four. So Lebanon was always our hometown, post office, grocery store. I went through kindergarten through 12th grade here. I went to college in UC. I moved back here after a while. I opened my CPA practice here in Lebanon about a little over 20 years ago. I liked the city, that's why I came back. Felt like home, it is home. And it's good to see everyone here, friends and neighbors. After being in town for a while, I decided, people would ask me things about the city, I'd tell them what I like, what I would change, and they say, well, why don't you run for city council and bring some of those ideas? So, I tried to, I did that. I like to think outside the box. I'm a person who does think outside the box a lot. And I would ask for your vote on November 5th.
Thank you. Mr. Jeffrey Ailer.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome, everybody. It's good to see a large crowd of people come to a meeting that I'm a part of. So, a few things about me, I'm a 36-year resident of Lebanon. I actually grew up in Franklin, Ohio. I came here when I got married 36 years ago. And I love this town. I'm a warrior. I've spent my entire life serving, so my first career was in the military. I'm retired Army. And after I retired in 2000, I immediately started looking for opportunities to serve in the city government. And it's been a great pleasure over the last 20 years to get to know this community both inside and out. I think it's important to realize that we live in a great city. We have wonderful city management. We have resources and we have capabilities and we have an ambiance and community that many people would love to have but don't. And I think it's our responsibility as a city council to preserve the historical nature, the charm, and yet figure out how do we continue to grow and innovate and become modern at the same time so that we're able to provide jobs, we're able to provide resources to our community, we're able to provide homes to people at all different levels in their life. It's an exciting time to be a part of Lebanon, Ohio. I'm glad to be here.
Thank you. Mr. Adam Matthews.
Hello, my name's Adam Matthews. I'm running for Lebanon City Council, and I'd like to thank each and every one of you for coming here tonight. I live right across from the Black Barn with my wife and the three kids, all born and raised here and grew up going to Colony Square Theater. And I did my Eagle Scout project up at Fort Ancient with Jack Blosser. I was a civilian engineer for the Navy Nuclear Program, and after that went back to be a patent attorney, where now I help serve residents of Lebanon and Warren County, get their small businesses off the ground, chasing their dreams and cutting down on the red tape that might get in the way. I'm running to help protect our historic small-town feel while promoting the great vibrancy and attractiveness that brings families here to Lebanon. I want to maintain our roads so that they're the quality that we expect. I've been on the Parks and Recreation Board, I'm the board chair for Elizabeth New Life Center, which runs the Pro-Life Women's Center right up on Columbus Avenue. I'm the treasurer of the Warren County GOP, and I'm on parish council and teach Sunday School. And right now, I just found out I'm coaching my children's Advanced Candy League at the YMCA. Also, tonight, I have Batman socks because my son wanted to match. So, with that, I'll ask for one of your three votes, and have a great evening.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Mr. Mark Messer.
Thank you for everyone coming tonight, along with Mr. Ailer. It's exciting to see this many people excited about city government. Our first question is going to be about vision, so I'll just give you a little update on, on who I am. I grew up here in Lebanon, and I was homeschooled actually from first grade to ninth grade, then went to Dayton Christian, graduated, went to LU, and graduated with a Bachelor of Science and Education. Moved back to the Lebanon area, and basically, within about a year, I started a small business. Owned and operate that still today. I am married with two awesome kids, Anna and Zeke. And I also do new product development and management for a textile company here in town. My dad operates as well. I've been serving on city council for, for two terms, and I love this community. I love what it has become as I've seen it grow over the past 30 years. And I ask for your vote again on November 5th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Messer. Mr. Jim Norris.
Thank you. Good to see friends and family here this evening. A few years ago, I was honored with giving the high school graduation speech as an alum from Lebanon High School with Steve Kaiser in 1971. And I particularly enjoyed that opportunity because I got to use anecdotes that I had always thought would be great to throw into and exchange with people in the audience, the community, and what have you. So, let's go back to 1984, and when Ronald Reagan and Walter Mondale were running. And Reagan had that classic, "I will not let the youth and inexperience of my opponent affect this particular proceeding." And that's how I feel about... Anyway, anyway, okay. And thank you for that. Keep waking me up. Another anecdote I like to draw on is something we've mostly, most of us have seen in the TV commercials, the elderly attorneys. But I like their line, "Experience, you know." And I have certainly become known in the community in, in many aspects. I figured one time I had over 5,000 students in 37 years of teaching. Is that the warning or stop? That's stop. So, I'm going to come back to that. The last word was "teaching." I'll be back.
Thank you, Mr. Norris. Mr. Joe Schaefer.
Good evening, Lebanon. This fine group up here, it's safe to say Lebanon's in good hands. I'm Joe Schaefer, a conservative candidate for Lebanon City Council. I'm a lifelong resident and graduate of Lebanon. I met my wife Savannah at Urban Crest Church, where I've attended for 11 years. We have six children, ages eight down to a year and a half, four princesses and two boys. My wife and I both run small businesses here in Lebanon. I've run my lawn and landscape business here in town for 13 years. I'm involved in local sports leagues, including the church softball league, and then a golf league with a bunch of old farts out at Armco. I have a Dave Ramsey-style approach to finances. Buy with cash and avoid debt wherever possible. I'm here tonight because I decided to step out of my comfort zone through a desire to get involved, believing I can make a difference for our city, serving on council. I would bring balance and new perspective and experience with budgeting and problem-solving. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Now, we're going to move into the question portion. We were pre-selected in order. We are going to start with Mr. Tassif. You will get the first question, then we'll go on down the line for, for each question. Mr. Tassif, if elected to city council, what is your vision for the city and how do you plan to execute it?
Vision. So, one of the things that initially motivated me to, to run for council, even to be in, to go to meetings so often, was the idea of being able to have balanced economic development. And what that really means is being able to keep that, that character of Lebanon. For us, when we moved here, we just, we loved this area more than any other because of the, the shops, the family-owned and operated places that sort of provide that kind of community, the unique little places that you can go, areas that you can walk, the parks, and sort of the family atmosphere. And one of the ways I see doing that is to be able to provide some of the money we're already spending on economic development, and making sure that some of that already goes, goes to the smaller businesses. This is something I've pressed in front of council on multiple times over the last several years, and it's something that I will continue to do. Unfortunately, we can't talk much about vision until we take care of our own critical resources. Right now, the roads need repairing, and we're going to talk a lot about that probably.
Thank you. Mr. Kaiser.
Yeah, vision for the city of Lebanon, it's, it's, has to grow a little bit more. It is inbound tied by lines that new development have to step outside of city Lebanon. Box stores like Walmart, they're outside the city limits. We are in an area that is, is very good positioning from Dayton, Cincinnati, the new bypass that is looking, I thought was going to go around it, but it looks like it's going to go right through the city. My vision is to try to be an influence to the city council and look at things differently sometimes when things are proposed. Look at alternatives, look at different ideas that can happen that maybe help Lebanon grow, yet stay the hometown community that I grew up in and that most people like.
Thank you. Mr. Ailer, I'll repeat the question again. If elected to city council, what is your vision for the city and how do you plan to execute it?
Thank you. My vision is going to be consistent with the vision that we as a council have developed already for the city for 2020. Our vision is to be a thriving and sustainable community that embraces opportunity and innovation and authenticity. Our mission as a city is to enhance the quality of life in our community by providing high-quality and cost-effective services that maintain the public's trust through exceptional service and sound stewardship of the resources that we have to manage. Our council has a set of very clear and specific goals we're focused on in the coming year. One is to improve and continually work on our financial stability, infrastructure and facilities, our service delivery, our public safety, which is number one in all of our concerns, the quality of the community, and to effectively market Lebanon. Market Lebanon to people, market Lebanon to business. That's not you. So, again, as a member of a board of seven people, my vision is consistent with the board that I helped develop. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Matthews.
My vision for Lebanon is very similar to the other candidates up here, in that it's protecting our historic small-town feel while promoting the vibrancy and attractiveness to families who wish to join our wonderful community on a strong foundation of our civic organizations, our churches, our businesses, and a well-run government. I want a bustling downtown where you come into an event at our parks, go to healthy shops and full restaurants, each free of unnecessary regulations, and then you go home to a neighborhood where you know your neighbors and the financial burden of income taxes, the bare minimum, to achieve the absolutely necessary quality of roads that we expect. I plan on working with the voice of the people, 500 of which doors I've knocked, and the rest of city council to provide a fresh but experienced perspective to council and keep Lebanon great.
Mr. Messer.
This is, uh, this is a big question, and I over, overdeveloped the answer, but my, my vision is also consistent with, with who have already spoke. And it's something that I've helped develop over the past eight years, being on city council. But really quickly, I want to continue to develop a vibrant community that is sustainable. We do that by requiring high-quality building and site design, employ incentives for redevelopment, and then smart land use is also critical. We need to improve conditions of our current retail. Columbus Avenue is squarely in our, in our, our sites. And then continue to develop policy around that. Continue to revitalize our downtown. We're, we're, we've been moving on that over the past four years, and we have exciting things going on there. Then develop and maintain functional roadways that help manage growth outside of our city limits as well as inside. And I'll just stop there.
Good timing. Mr. Norris.
Thank you. Experience, you know. I was on city council for four terms, starting with the election of 2001. And so, I have sat through hundreds of hours of debating issues and learning the role of city councilman, which is policy-setting and working toward consensus. This has given me that great opportunity to continue to serve and be amongst us who've lived in Lebanon, in my case, for over 60 years. Vision, I had it the other day. I was down here on the corner next to Mai Tais, and I'm looking at the railroad, and I'm looking up the other, up to the north to the, the possible development there. I just read about that extensively in the Pulse here recently. And I've been a part of many, many consensus arrived at decisions which have helped to make our downtown a whole lot more like what it is. Thank you.
Mr. Schaefer.
I concur with a lot of the ideas up here these gentlemen are talking about. However, I would love to see a Lebanon, I would love to see Lebanon become a debt-free city. About 10 years ago, my wife and I went through Dave Ramsey's Financial Peace University. Together, we had about $40,000 of student loan and other debt. We set a goal to pay it off within a year and a half. We changed our habits, we lived below our means, and we cut things out that weren't necessities. Through hard work and a strict budget, we hit our target of paying off that $40,000 in a year and a half. Since then, after adopting better financial habits, at 35 and 36 years old, we have bought and paid for our home and an investment property. The financial health of our city depends on sound money management practices. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Now, we're moving on to everyone's favorite topic, roads. Mr. Kaiser, you'll be up first. For its 2020 goals, city council has identified, identified improving our roadways as a key objective. Is the amount listed in the proposed budget sufficient to meet this objective?
Oh, you skipped the question. State funds and as far as grants and so forth are never sufficient. Otherwise, we'd have nice roads here. We have to come up with our own funds to help build our city's roads. We passed, and the city council passed additional tax by giving away, getting away the credit for the, for the income tax paid to other cities. And one of the things that was stipulated is that, that additional money would all go towards roads. And on city council, I would like to be monitor, make sure that is really happening, that not only does that money go to roads, but the percent of the budget that formerly went to the roads continues at that same percentage. Because roadways are important.
Mr. Ailer.
Thank you. So luckily, I've been involved in the process the last four years. Council made some significant policy decisions around the tax credit. The biggest issue we had in funding was the fact that we lost funding from the state of Ohio. The local government fund was cut significantly. So this problem started back in the early 2000s. We had a 60 to 70% backlog every year in our ability to pave roads. I'm happy to tell you, with the things that we've done, we're down to 5% in 2020. 5%. That includes $900-plus thousand dollars from the tax credit being added to the, the road program, $499,000 from the gas tax. And because of that money, we've been able to secure grants that we could not get before because of matching funds we didn't have of $1.27 million. So we're going to be paving all kinds of roads here in the next few years, and we're going to continue to do that until we catch that backlog up.
Thank you, Mr. Ailer. Mr. Matthews.
The short answer is that the, the state funds are insufficient. Our road expenditures for 2019 were budgeted to be $5.95 million in the 2019 proposed budget. And the state and federal that comes in is supposed to be just under two. So we make up that difference with an income tax, a 1% income tax, and then as my, the other gentleman up here, a tax credit reduction. Thankfully, we will be having a state gas tax coming online, and that's expected to bring in, on a conservative estimate, at least $430,000 extra dollars every year. With, with that, I agree, we should make sure that our roads are the quality that we expect. And paying for them is one of the, the necessary goals of a local responsive government. Once those roads and that backlog's done, we should bring back the full reciprocity or as much as we can.
Thank you. Mr. Messer.
As you've heard, state funds are insufficient, grossly inefficient, or insufficient. The city has to allocate a large part of its general fund to road, road repair, and we will be having a gas tax come online, which is 400, the city's estimating about $410,000. ODOT is a little bit over that, but we want to budget conservatively. My plan is not, includes this, but is not limited to bringing in industrial partners that help strengthen the tax base, work with the developers to provide an opportunity for more vibrant downtown, continue to reduce burdensome red tape for redevelopment and development in the community, incentivize small business, something that Ryan's talked about, provide excellent emergency services, and maintain a focus on grant writing. Grant writing is especially important to our community. It makes up a, a large chunk of the budget when it comes to roads. And supporting ballot measures and a strong community where people want to live.
Thank you. Mr. Norris.
Thank you. When I, in fact, it was my first meeting as a new councilman. We were given the vote from the previous council who would not take the vote for the Main Street improvements. Now, a lot of us take that for granted today, of course. It's been 17 years ago. So I became a street guy early. I sat through at least 10 years of our fine staff telling us that our road inventory was being inadequately addressed. We were given advice by a citizens' community, a committee, to reduce the tax credit totally, to raise those funds and address our responsibility as a community. Well, after all those meetings and the annual discussion, we made the decision that we did make here about three years ago, I believe it is, to reduce the credit by half and have everyone then in the city, many more working outside the city than who work in the city, contribute to our road improvement fund.
Thank you, Mr. Norris. Mr. Schaefer.
State funding is consistently insufficient to cover local roadway costs. It's the responsibility of local government to properly manage its annual budget and creatively seek out new money to complete its capital improvement plan. With the per ODOT, $433,000 gas tax revenue and nearly a million of revenue from the tax credit reduction, we have the ability to make headway with our backlog of road projects. We're spending $2 million more in 2020 on road projects than just three years ago. Our city manager, Scott Brunka, has already budgeted conservatively with respect to new money from the gas tax. Will definitely be making more progress on road construction, resurfacing, and spending an additional $300,000 on curb replacement projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tassif.
This is great because I get to go, well, that's not great, but I get to go last. And Mr. Ailer and Mr. Norris really gave you a vast background on the history there and how we ended up where we are and, and why the tax credit reduction took place. In the coming years, the tax credit reduction is going to pay for two-thirds of the amount of money that we put in to the road project, which is absolutely necessary to get the grants that we need to make this happen. I would love to stand here and tell you I'm going to give you guys money back, and that somehow we're going to make it up in the future. I don't know how, but we're going to. I'm not going to do that because I can't. It would be fiscally irresponsible for me to tell you I'm going to give you a credit when we can't pay for our most basic services like roads. And I'm going to make sure that we have a great plan in place and that we see it through until it's done.
Thank you. Mr. Ailer, we'll start with you. On our next question, the city appears to be moving forward on the designated outdoor refreshment area, also known as DORA, in the downtown business district. What is your position on this issue?
Thank you. I, I'm a huge supporter of the concept of the DORA, and I first want to thank Ryan Tassif for initiating the petitions in the city with the local businesses to bring this to council and present the concept. I can honestly tell you that the current city council, we've already submitted applications to the state of Ohio. We're going through the process. We look forward to the community coming out and giving us feedback as part of the town halls that will be involved in that process. But again, this is consistent with our downtown master plan that was just developed, and the, the nature of the businesses that are in our downtown. Their response is that this is going to benefit them. And the other great thing about the DORA is that we've had other communities close to us that have done this already. So Mason, Loveland, Hamilton, there's a number of others. And the great thing is, there's no issue. We have done a great study. We've had our police chief in communication with all of them. There are no issues that they've identified as a result of the DORA in their community.
Mr. Matthews.
For those that don't know, the DORA is a designated outdoor refreshment area. It's been pushed by Main Street Lebanon and the Chamber. I'm the vice chair of Main Street Lebanon, and we've helped work out a lot of the kinks on how to work this out, including working with the city on how to inventory cups, make sure that the rules of the DORA will be on the cups, and working with the businesses for all of this. And it's been very exciting, we're getting to reach out for all of these businesses in my capacity as a vice chair for Main Street and to get this done, and working with council for that. Speaking with the police chief, as Mr. Ailer mentioned, the main concern for this is what would happen for our character. In the five, the last five years of our festivals, there has been one arrest, and it was not alcohol-related, it was an officer recognized someone with an outstanding warrant. So he had a bad time at the festival. And this would allow us to solve the problem of outdoor dining without encapsulating it for our restaurants to give drinks to right there with the specialized system.
Thank you. Mr. Messer.
I love this question, and I'm glad it was asked. In my opinion, this is a, the only reason this is happening is because of how the community and the government worked so well together. Our, the study that we did was, was inclusive and allowed voices from all over the community to come together and, and give us their insight on, on what they wanted to see their downtown look like. And that's the downtown master plan. And the DORA is something that came out of that, and the downtown shops are really the, the main driver behind it. And it's been, it's been good to, to work with, with Main Street and local merchants, and I think it's going to do nothing but, but good for our, for our community. Other communities that, that have it are Mason, Liberty Center, Milford, Middletown. And as Mr. Ailer and Mr. Matthews have already talked about, the police chief is, is also behind it. So I'm excited about it.
Thank you. Mr. Norris, what is your position on DORA?
Thank you very much. I am interested in the promotion of the city and its life, it's, certainly its quality of life. At this point, I have not been one who has heard all the discussion with regard to this matter. But at this point, I certainly favor when Mulberry... matter, but at this point, I certainly favor when Mulberry is closed and we are having some time of, some type of an event in that district, I certainly would favor this DORA being applied. Beyond that, and whether there is even something beyond that in some people's minds with regard to this matter, we're consensus finders, and we listen in council, and I hope to have that chance to hear more on this, and we'll make the best decision. Thank you.
Mr. Schaefer?
All things considered, the DORA approval could boost sales for the downtown businesses. There are no indications of law enforcement problems in other DORA areas of the region. I do believe the current council needs to approve this in a way that we have the flexibility to make changes as needed to address unforeseen problems. I'd also be willing to, for instance, allow for stiffer penalties for violations in this area to encourage safety and responsibility for all of the participants, similar to being penalized for speeding through a school or construction zone. Thank you.
Mr. Tassif?
The DORA is automatically flexible. You can change it anytime and just go through the process again. I'm a little bit biased in this because I own a business in that area, Lampost Cheese. Actually, the nice story I do want to add, I agree with a lot of stuff that was said. I talked to the city manager multiple times, you know, I like this idea of a DORA. Let's ask people if it's a good idea. And I was told, okay, well, Main Street Lebanon or someone else has to bring it up. I'm not a very patient person in that sense. I saw something that I thought was going to be good for the city, so I actually went out and started a petition. I talked to Mason. I got all the information from them, presented it in front of the city council, and I'm very proud to say that's what kicked it off. So I like the DORA. Another thing to note is that it will be voted on this November, so it's not really an issue for, it probably won't be an immediate issue for the next council, but if it ever came up, I'd also have to abstain, I suppose.
Thank you. Mr. Kaiser?
Yeah, I like the DORA. It's good for the city. It, there's not any perceived problems. I'm glad to see it coming. I'm glad to see that was promoted. And I've been downtown, and there's a girls' night out, even though it's not walking around the different stores with a beer glass in hand. All the different stores had wine or beer or something, and the people just loved it, and it brought in more people downtown to shop and so forth. And it would be nice if they could have it all the time instead of a girls' night out. And if a store doesn't want drinks, they can always put up a sign, no food or drinks.
Thank you. Mr. Matthews, we will start with you on our next question. The Chamber of Commerce has received many proposed questions regarding council's meeting attendance rate. In your opinion, is this a legitimate concern?
For the, for sitting city council members that are elected to represent the, all of you, absolutely. You are there, you are given a stipend, and you are expected to represent with an informed vote on all of, everything before the city. And it is honorable, if life's priorities come in front of that, to step down and let someone else represent the city, and that is very, very good. For those not, it's not as much. If and when the Bengals go looking for a new head coach, they're not going to go to the list of the season ticket holders for who had the greatest attendance. It will be, they will find someone that's qualified for the position and bring them in and expect them to do the job well. That being said, I've been to meetings about every other month to push through things I've worked through in my other organizations, including the DORA, including a change of regulations on signs to allow alleyways, alleyway signage.
You have much higher expectations of the Cincinnati Bengals than I do.
Yeah.
Mr. Messer?
Yes, if you're on city council, I think it's important that you come to the meetings that you're elected to show up to. To my knowledge, we've really never had a problem with members having unexcused absences. Sometimes members have to miss. We're not all professional politicians. We've got full-time jobs, sometimes more than full-time jobs, travel, work, birth of children, surgeries. I mean, all those things happen, and we humbly ask for, to be excused, and that happens, and that's, but we also all have read ahead materials. We get, listen to the council meetings. We all stay informed, and we all make informed decisions, so.
Thank you, Mr. Messer. Mr. Norris?
Well, I've only noticed very good attendance, if this is what this question is about. If that's what this question is about. I thought it might be asking to run for council if you're not an incumbent, or in my case, sat there 16 years through all those meetings. If you've not been around council, does that affect, you know, our, your view or our view of you with regard to, you know, being a council person? It's been alluded to up here by several, or at least a couple people, that, you know, they're very good attendants, and they've not been on council with regard to that. And I'm not really sure about this question. Of course, good attendance is an expectation, and we enforce this once long ago with someone who wasn't there a lot with regard to excused absences. It's a very, very high expectation.
Mr. Schaefer?
Anyone considering a council run or current council members should know the time demand and be flexible enough in their schedules to fulfill their fiduciary duties to the taxpayers. Attendance will not be an issue for me. So playing on a ratings boost for Channel 6. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Mr. Tassif?
I kind of misinterpreted this question, so I'll get back to that, but I already-
And let me explain it. I think the intent of most of the questions we receive, those that are on council, is them not appearing for council meetings a legitimate concern?
This is, that didn't count as my time right now.
No. We can start over for him. Absolutely.
Of course, it would be a concern if people were absent the official council meetings. I haven't, I mean, I'm there all the time. I haven't seen any, any problems at all, other than the few excused absences that were mentioned. I'd like to point out that I am there all the time, and I don't have a reason to be other than I care. So even not being on council, I don't think you have to worry about me showing up, and I do have two jobs, and I still make the time. One thing I thought it was about was about attendance for other people at the council, and I think it's, I think that we should be encouraging more people to come to the council meetings to be involved. I think that, you know, it's part of the community to want to go, but it's part of the leadership of the council to take the leadership role to say, I want to get out the information on what we're doing. That's the way I interpreted the question, but, so I think both things are important, and I think we have one we're doing well and one we need to work on.
Thank you. Mr. Kaiser?
Yeah, I interpreted that two ways, too. I thought, well, you want to get more people to come to attend our council meetings, or do you want the council members to make sure they attend the meetings? Both are important. When I was on city council, I not only, I attended most, all the meetings unless I was out of town, and also attended some of our committee meetings, the Tree Council, the Parks Board, the other Planning Commission Board meetings. I'd like to, like to know what was going on in the city and what were eventually becoming our way to city council, to hear the actual discussions that happened before the proposals came to city council. But yeah, meetings, attendance, of course, is important if you're going to be interested and be a good city council member, and it's also important to have people like this audience would be nice to have at a city council meeting.
Mr. Ailer?
Thank you. Absolutely. Attendance is critical for a council member to just be effective. I think it's important to recognize, even beyond the fact that we're compensated, our attendance is required to keep the operational tempo of the city moving. 90-plus percent of the legislation that we pass is about day-to-day business operations that have to keep moving, and if we're not there to pass that legislation, and we're not aware of what's going on, how can we be making good and effective decisions? Now, we have rules. Council has rules. You have to have excused absences, and there are times where a council member has a business conflict, or they'll have a family vacation. I'm sorry, but I do believe in family vacations. But if a council member misses more than two in a row unexcused meetings, then the council has the ability to recall them. So there are rules around attendance. We are cognizant of how many people show up and when, and if there are patterns in that attendance. So definitely important, and, but more for the operational tempo of the city. We have to keep the city moving.
Thank you, Mr. Ailer. Mr. Messer, we're going to start with you with our next question. What is your personal history with the Lebanon and Warren County communities, specifically addressing your membership in any local boards or organizations?
So I've served on council now for eight years. You've heard that a couple times. I also have a background in management, product development, and entrepreneurship. I lean on those life experiences. I've also served on the LEPC Board, Local Emergency Planning Commission. I'm currently serving on the Lebanon Christian Board, School Board, and then I am a district rep and on the executive committee for the Warren County Republican Party. I'm also working with Jim Ludwig with Shade Tree to help maintain trails on the YMCA property, cut down and chainsaw bushes and things like that away from trees, so. I maintain a strong desire to serve my community and to serve it well.
Thank you. Mr. Norris?
I am going to refer to a question that was skipped over with regard to council members and working with them as a whole by saying CBS, certainly not my favorite network, but anyway. Consensus, back off, and support. Personal history, 29 years in the disappearing school building up the hill, and more years than other buildings. Solutions, counseling, over 35 years. Museum, over 25 years. Main Street, I'd say four, five years. One of my favorite groups is the Lebanon Alumni Association, in which a group of people have said, not just having fun, but let's do something productive. And we've built up an endowment of over 50 grand. We give three scholarships, 2,500 each in the springtime, and that, that's just a whole lot, made it's a whole lot.
And just so the candidates know, you were provided with a list of questions, but they're not necessarily in the order that I am asking them, so we will get to all of those as time permits. Mr. Schaefer?
I could, I could probably spend hours answering this question. It deserves-
You've got a minute.
It deserves more time than 60 seconds as to what ties me to Lebanon. How about a 10-year look back? My wife and I have been donors to the Elizabeth New Life Center. We support many faith-based organizations through fundraisers. My wife worked for our county government for over 10 years and serves in the music ministry at our church. Although I prefer to keep this information kind of private, I've been serving in the community for years by providing yard work for families who suffered a tragedy or those who are not able. My family is always looking for ways to help fulfill needs of others. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Mr. Tassif?
Yes, so I'm relatively new to the area. I don't think that's a surprise to most people. My wife and I moved to the general area to settle down, and we looked at a lot of the different neighborhoods around, and we chose to come to Lebanon because of the character and because of the quality of the people. We built our, we bought our home here, our first home. We built a business here because we care about it. I attend the council meetings because I'm preparing and to be able to ask you for a position on that council. That's why I go, and that's where I try to stay involved, and that's how I try to be a part of the city. Being new, I don't think is a disadvantage necessarily. I think it lets me bring a different perspective to the council, and I think it, you know, I can go up there without any baggage or previous bias, and I think that you might find that that could be helpful as a representative for you.
Mr. Kaiser?
Well, I didn't choose to come here, but I've been here probably as, almost as long as anyone except maybe Jim Norris, more, longer than anyone but him, since my parents didn't move in this area till I was four. I've been involved in the, all sorts of community, the Eagles, the Masonic Lodge, the Rotary Club. I've been president of the Lebanon Conservancy Foundation. If you pick up one of my cards at the, at the entrances, it has a list of things I've been involved with. School events, so I've had two kids I brought up here and through Lebanon schools. Coached soccer for the, in the Saye Soccer. I was also on their board for a while. I was the deacon at a church here. I like the community. I tried to stay involved with the community. When I was on city council, I went through the Tree Academy that the Department of Natural Resources has, to be involved with, with what Lebanon does. Something I didn't have to do, but I think that's a red card.
Thank you, Mr. Ailer.
My first board was Lebanon Parks and Rec Board. This was just after 2000, when I retired from the military. I then went to the Planning Commission because I felt like that was probably the most important board leading to city council experience. From there, I was elected to my first term on city council in 2003. I was re-elected in 2007. I took some time off because my work was quite hectic and traveling all over the world and didn't really have time to spend effectively serving, but then ran again in 2015 and was elected to my third term. Now I'm seeking a fourth term. I've been on the OKI, or the Ohio Kentucky Regional Council of Governments Board of Directors, for the last four years representing Lebanon, which is a regional metropolitan planning authority for government transportation grants from the federal government. They're the people that gave us the 1.2 million dollars for our roads to be repaved. I work in Warren County. I work for Makino Incorporated. I'm the head of quality for Makino and the Americas, and they have a very strong organization called the Makino Foundation that serves Warren County.
Thank you, Mr. Ailer. Mr. Matthews?
Currently, I am on the Parks and Recreation Board, and we helped design and push through the new bike park right across from Home Depot and get the grant for the YMCA bike path relocation and renovation. I'm the vice president for Lebanon Kwanis. I'm the vice chair for Main Street Lebanon, representing many of our merchants and putting on many events in downtown Lebanon. I'm on our parish council, and I fill in and teach Sunday School. And from my role in parish council and as a leadership Warren County class of 2017, we started a charity three years ago that this third year will be deep frying 200 turkeys and giving them away right here in Lebanon the day before Thanksgiving. I did my Eagle Scout project up at Forne Ancient. I'm the treasurer of the Republican Party here in Warren County, and I'm the board chair of Elizabeth New Life Center, which runs the Pro-Life Center up on Columbus Avenue. I'm now the coach for Advanced Candy League, and I am a former Grand Night for the Knights of Columbus and work most, most festivals.
Thank you. Mr. Norris, we will start with you on our next question. The income tax credit reduction has been debated in Lebanon for a long time. What is your position on this issue?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. First of all, I'd say, well, let's ask residents on Highland and Summit Street. And if you haven't done that, or you hadn't done it in recent years, it's certainly like driving in Baghdad, and certainly something that drove the issue in council for years, as I said earlier, to do something in the absence of anyone and to this very moment, though we're getting some better news with regard to tax and what have you, to have something that we can do, a plan. Never was a plan, not to this very moment. And we, after long debate, took the tax credit step we did after two elections in which the citizens would not vote any more money. It was our responsibility. I admire the council members who, in a very narrow majority, address that issue, I would say, and it's been referred to already, that that can be put back as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Norris. Mr. Schaefer?
Before the decision was made to put additional tax burden on Lebanon residents who work outside the city, the city gave the voters the option of an income tax increase, which was rejected. I believe this desperate reduction of the tax credit was not necessary if the city had been paying closer attention to details. In 2013, Warren County spent $26,000 on a court consolidation study that found $308,000 in immediate annual savings for the city of Lebanon. City council rejected these cost-saving measures by not even voting on it. When you consider annual increases in court costs, and had our council voted on this court consolidation, our savings combined with new gas- consolidation, our savings combined with new gas tax money would negate the need to squeeze taxpayers. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Tassif?
Yeah, I'm glad that we keep coming back to this because it's an incredibly important decision that everybody has to make. Again, it would be really easy for me to say, I'm going to give you all your money back. I'm going to make I'm going to increase the credit. But the reality is that the road program right now, as it stands, regardless of how we got here at this point, as it stands, requires the tax credit reduction to see it through. Roads are one of the most critical aspects of a community. Lebanon is one of the most fiscally responsible cities around. We run the city council has run a tight ship, at least in the last four years that I've seen, and there is literally nowhere else to get the money at this point. If we want to maintain our critical services, we have to make sure that we don't make promises that we can't keep. And if you want to see those roads repaired, if you want to see long-term maintenance and not end up back here, we have to see this program through.
Thank you. Mr. Kaiser?
Yes, the roads were a problem for years. Not only did they have holes in it, the whole production was going down in a big hole, and they were getting worse as time went on. They weren't even being maintained properly, let alone improved. And there wasn't the money for it. People, this is a bedroom community. People come here to live and enjoy the city that they live in. They work outside the city, maybe because they can make more money. They don't want to live near the smokestacks in Middletown or down in all the traffic area and in crime and maybe Cincinnati or Dayton. They like this area. But when they're paying all their taxes to other cities, and those cities don't give any of that money back to us, we have to come up with money somehow to maintain the roads and then maintain a good quality city for people to live in. Therefore, it felt city council felt it was necessary to provide find some funds because things were just getting worse.
Thank you. Mr. Aylar?
Thank you. I think it's important for the community to know that Lebanon was the last large community in Warren County to take any action relative to income tax increase or reduction of tax credit or both. We lived without that for many years, and it's and we it caused us significant issues with our roads. We acted on that tax credit here with the hope and expectation that someday we'll be able to give it back if it's fiscally responsible to do it. We put in our fiscal policy. Every year, it has to be reviewed whether or not the money is available and the credit can be returned. We know that we want to do it. We know that that's the long-term hope. But I can tell you, there is no hidden money. We have paid down our debt so much that we have shifted money out of our general obligation bond fund into the capital improvement fund to increase our road pavement. We have, I'm going to tell you right now, there's no other place to get the money in the three funds that you have to pave roads. If you do it, you're going to decimate the city government because you're going to take it right out of people. The only money available is in our staff, police officers and city staff. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Matthews?
Great. And I agree. I'm very happy to hear that every year that this tax credit reduction, which was billed as something that was emergency and temporary, is reviewed every year because temporary revenue increases have a nasty way of becoming permanent. And I agree with the state of how things were when this was passed. That's wonderful, and there really is a difficult way of finding money out of our current budget. Thankfully, the state has found a new tax that's going to be hitting all of us statewide with the new gas tax, which is supposed to bring in $430,000. We will now be taxed twice for saving for the same purpose of saving the roads. As much as we can, we pay back our backlog, look at that 430, once it comes in, and change the state of what our funds are, and bring that tax credit reduction back as soon as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Mr. Messer?
So I was involved in all of those conversations over those the past eight years, and my goal still now is to bring that tax credit back to where it was previously. We cannot even begin to argue the fact that our roads were in disrepair. Bringing bringing it up to a 5% underfund is fabulous, considering it's always been in the 60s and 70s. It's exciting to see that that 410 coming back into the state. Granted, it's our money anyway, but it's it's good that it's coming back to us. We are also doing things, making sure our budget's stable. The the credit card processing fee will be saving about $150,000 a year. So that's that's another shock back into the GF. So it, yeah, I'm I'm done.
Thank you. Mr. Schaefer, last but not, no, Mr. Norris, have you had an opportunity to answer that question? I think he started with Mr. Norris.
I did.
Yes. He threw me for a loop there, Mr. Schaefer.
Now I can say it again.
Will we ring the bell on that one real quick? Mr. Schaefer, last question to you. What is a change you believe needs to be made to the city's ordinances or regulations?
Thank you. I have no bones to pick with the city over its regulations that promote safety and well-being for all. I personally would like to see a change in the city's ban on certain livestock animals. I think it'd be fun and a great educational opportunity for those 4-H families in town to have the option to raise a backyard chicken or two as pets in a responsible manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tassif?
You know, I thought that we were going to be able to have a backyard chicken, but we don't. We don't have enough space. I think also that the general regulations and ordinances of the cities are pretty tight. There may be a few qualms with people along the way, but there's a system in which that's in place to be able to deal with that. A lot of times, the city's very willing to listen to people when they come up with any particular issues. I don't see any issue. There are maybe some things about zoning that we might be able to loosen some codes or strengthen them, but again, in general, I think everything is pretty tight. I think we need to focus on the decisions that the council's going to make within the context of those regulations, how we're going to spend economic development money that's already been, you know, secured for economic development to get it to smaller businesses, how we're going to maintain the roads that we've been talking about. I think those are the more important issues that we need to look at right now. The general run of the city and the general regulations, I think, are in good shape.
Mr. Kaiser?
The regulations of the city are pretty good. However, I've had different people talk about problems they have with the regulations, like car dealerships who want to make moves, and and they've run into a lot of red date. Other different small businesses who have issues that they they have to jump through a lot of hoops to get what they would want, which is probably good for the city. If there was a more a review board or something that could look at some of these things and to help these small businesses and other businesses who want to stay in Lebanon and grow in Lebanon, to be able to grow their business here without a lot of problems, red tapes, and other things that I've heard about, it would be a nice thing for us to start, a review board or something like that to help see what kind of regulations are hurting our businesses in the city or people moving in.
Thank you. Mr. Aylar?
Thank you. I think, you know, number one, less regulation is better. We want to be a business-friendly community. We want to be a community that businesses can come to and they're able to get their businesses established in the community. But we also have to maintain standards. I mean, you're all concerned about those as well. But after my experience, I think probably the area we could focus on the most with our regulations is around how we apply them to small business. Ryan has touched on this. I think others would touch on this. Being a small business owner myself for seven years, we treat them just like a big business. We expect that they can handle all of the different regulations with one person, two people on their staff to deal with all of that. I think there's a better and a simpler way to apply these with small businesses that would help us build more small business, especially in our downtown court. That's what separates our community from a lot of other communities, is that small business feel and that and that's going to take some extra work on our part.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes. I agree. Any of our regulations need to be narrowly tailored to achieve the ends we want instead of being blunt objects. If you didn't know, Airbnbs are functionally banned in the city of Lebanon and recently so. I would bring I would loosen those regulations. We have regulations on maintenance and noise and nuisance, and so things that need to be regulated should be, but those that don't shouldn't. And if you own your property, you should be able to use it in a respectful manner. And I'd like to investigate. There was a mention of the credit card fees, an electric fee transfer, where you could avoid the credit card fees that can come up to $150,000. You might be able to set up an auto payment, which would make it easier for our citizens to pay and also increase collections so people don't accidentally miss payment, increasing revenue and and quality of life for all of our residents.
Thank you. Mr. Messer?
This is a great question, and I got way too far into the weeds. So I'm gonna I'm gonna try and bring this down. So our code mirrors the county and state code relatively closely. Our comprehensive plan update started literally this Tuesday. Mr. Aylar and I were in that meeting and started spinning that up. In that process, we're actually going to do a full review, Mr. Kaiser, of the of the code, and we're going to compare it to other growing and thriving cities and see and see where we are missing and where we are doing things that just could be necessarily out of bounds. The goal is to to make business and development and living here a not as difficult. And I think what that's going to do is, over the past eight years, we've made these small little changes to the code, and I just don't think it has moved the needle far enough. Now, what this is going to do is give us the ability to make broad sweeps into the code and make large changes quickly.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Good timing. Mr. Norris?
Well, as a as a cheeseburger guy, I want to eat more chicken. Our history includes a small fee on stormwater management. I say that because after the study and arriving at consensus, that's what council does with regard to the credit card use and so forth. I like Mr. Matthews' idea, so that would be something for discussion, further discussion, in my view. Murals. The museum had a great idea a few years ago with regard to a mural on a wall, and that was a big no from staff's recommendation. I'm not necessarily calling for us to reopen that, but and I've been in many cities that have them. I think Cincinnati's getting a little out of control, but anyway, that we had some good ideas at that time. Maybe we could bring that up again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Norris. We are done with the questions. Now each candidate will have 90 seconds to provide a closing statement. We started at that end of the table to begin with. Mr. Schaefer, we're going to start with you. You may begin.
Let's do it. At the end of the day, the voters want to know that they have a councilman they can relate to and can trust with making wise decisions for the city. I may be younger than many of these folks, but I've accomplished a great deal. In a year and a half, my wife and I paid off $40,000 of student loan and other debt. Since then, we bought and paid for our home and our investment property using our Dave Ramsey style. I bring with me a unique set of management, problem-solving, and budgeting skills from running a small business for 13 years and raising six children. I'm pro-life, pro-Second Amendment, pro-family. I'm a born-again believer, saved by grace. I'd be grateful and feel honored to have your vote on November 5th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. Mr. Norris?
First, I want to give a shout out to my long list of things I was involved in. I'm a new member of the ALCS, and if I didn't tell you that, someone would be upset in this room. Anyway, the other half of that commercial I was referring to earlier when I said experience you can trust was experience you know. Well, excuse me, it was experience you know. And I'm closing with the other half, which is experience you can trust. These are great people up here. They do a lot of thankless things that no one knows about with regard to our community. So which of us would you call and want to have answered at 3:00 in the morning? Just kidding. That's largely kidding. Do not call at 3:00 in the morning. Good people. Now, the tune is changing a bit with regard to some comments I'm hearing here. For example, that tax credit reduction, some things I saw floating around with regard to what we need to do to people who voted for it. And I said earlier, I admire those people for doing something. My sign says, "Thank you." Experience you can trust. You elected me four times, and I appreciate that very much. I pay for my own signs. There are no code words on there. I can very clear when I say that, that though I certainly agree with some of the other things being said here about what they believe in. I'm not beholden to any organization, any person with regard to decisions I have made through my 16 years in council. Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Norris. Mr. Messer?
This is, you have to have a an attitude of service to to serve as a city councilman. It is, it's not a grandiose job. You have to read a lot of paperwork. Sometimes you're in meetings for three hours with gentlemen like this. We have a we have a great board, and I have been absolutely blessed to serve with some incredible people, and I have learned so much in my eight years working with them. I I think that Lebanon is in good hands. I think somebody said that, maybe Joe. And and everyone up here, it brings such incredible things to the table. And regardless of how you vote, I'm a terrible politician. Regardless of how you vote, I think you're making a good decision. And I think the the town is going in a fantastic direction. I think our goals and our visions are aligned with the community, and I would just humbly ask for your vote again November 5th, and I look forward to serving you regardless if I'm elected. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Messer. Mr. Matthews?
Hello again. I'm Adam Matthews. I'd like to ask for one of your three votes. I'm a fresh but experienced perspective to come on to the Lebanon City Council. Through my organizations, I've been able to speak to council and already work with council to change regulations on signs to allow the back of our businesses to know which buildings there are, to get the bike park across from Home Depot done, work through the West Main Master Plan. I'll be soon promoting the Parks and Rec Master Plan. And through those things and working with council and the work in the city, I've been able to earn some respect. There's two former council members that have my yard signs in their yard. The majority of the current city council has yard signs in their yards for me, and multiple candidates up here signed my petition to be on the ballot. And with that as well, the Chamber of Commerce humbly gave me the 2018 Young Professional of the Year, and Warren County Foundation gave me the 2019 Emerging Leader of the Year. All of these things are are great, but it's because of a community like this one that makes it so easy to volunteer my time, a supportive wife and kids that love cooking turkeys and licking stamps and doing all of these things to make it possible. I'll echo, everyone up here is great, and I will be accessible. My my literature is over there. My phone number's on there if you have any other questions that weren't answered here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Mr. Aylar?
Thank you. Again, thank you to the chamber for organizing this for us. Thank you for those that came. Being an incumbent, it's not too difficult for you to get a sense of what my voting record is or what my thought processes are. You've probably, I'm sure you are riveted at Channel 6 every time we're on TV. But the city is is doing well. We have very strong city management. We have a very good working council. The one thing I'll tell you about being on city council is that this is not a one, it's not a one-person deal. You're one of seven people. If you don't know how to work with people, if you don't know how to communicate, if you don't know how to persuade people, and then lose gracefully or win gracefully to maintain harmony on a board, I can tell you right now, the most important thing about city council is being harmonious and of one mind so that the city staff is not confused about what they need to do every day to make this city work. Now, I don't know how many people think about that, but that's what we're a board of directors, and that's our that's our objective, to set policy that's clear. I enjoy that part. I don't, this is the worst part about being on city council is elections. I love governing, and I hope you'll give me that opportunity by voting for me early or on November 5th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aylar. Mr. Kaiser?
Yes, my my four years on council were very enjoyable. I like to be able to see all the proposals beforehand, make sure I had read them, and all the proposals beforehand, make sure I had read them and knew what they're to discuss when we come to the meeting, what do ideas I could bring or add to those ideas. I would, I, I appreciate all you here. I just, I was just had a fleeting thought that seven of us, and you only get to vote for three, it's like going to the restaurant, what do I want tonight, or which is, but you've got a choice to make, and, and it's, if there was three of us running, it would be easy, but it's, it's not going to be an easy choice. Also, Matthew reminded me of my donation to the bike park. That was, I really enjoy that bike park. I haven't been out there riding. I don't do much bike riding anymore, but it's something that I thought the community needed. We need maybe some sort of bike path from the crust to bypass so people on the other side of the bypass can get over the Y and back and forth. There's a lot of things our community still needs, a lot of things I'd like to help encourage and to help this community grow and be a nice place to live in, and I would like your vote for on November 5th.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser. Mr. Tassif.
So, I like a lot of what people are saying up here. I would note that, I think that sometimes people use the idea of pro-this or labels on their signs to put people into neat little boxes on what team I'm on. And when it comes to the local government, there isn't really a team. It's about, do you care about the city? And two years ago, when the GOP released the list of the Republicans in your area so you knew who to vote for, when you came to Ryan Tassif, it wasn't Republican and it wasn't Democrat. I listed as liberal, and I had a little asterisk next to my name that said "crazy liberal" because of a joke that I had made. I want you to think about this. Is it crazy to attend meetings regularly as a citizen? Is it crazy to support our schools, our firefighters, to ask for money that's already being donated to, are already being used for economic development to get to smaller businesses? Is it crazy to ask to fix the roads and to be honest about how we can do that? Or is it crazy to come in and not have ever gone to a council meeting and tell people you know how they can do their job better? Or is it crazy to promise things that you're going to fix roads, you're going to improve resources, and we're going to give you money back, and I don't know where that money's going to come from? This is a critical election. You need to make a decision on what can be done and who can get it done, and again, it would be the most, the deepest honor if you would elect me as your representative.
Thank you, Mr. Tassif. That concludes our program. The audience rules are now suspended, and you may clap for all of our candidates.